Okay, it is six o'clock on Monday, December 20th. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager at Settlement Housing Fund, which is part of Harlem River Preservation, and we're going to begin the Town Hall meeting for residents of Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two. Before I get started, would the Spanish translation line please unmute and introduce yourself?
Hi, good evening. This message is going to be in Spanish offering interpretation services. Buenas noches, señoras, señores, todos los que necesiten escuchar esta reunión en español. Por favor, marquen desde su teléfono el número 646 558 8656 y el código de acceso o número PIN 331 425 8640, signo numeral. Una vez más, el número a llamar para escuchar esta reunión con una interpretación simultánea en español es el 646 558 8656 con el código de acceso 331 425 8640, signo numeral. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Benito. And the Chinese line, would you please unmute and introduce yourself? Thank you so much. So just a quick note as always on the format for the meeting. We dropped off a printed copy of this presentation to all of the households at Harlem River and Harlem River Two. If you're listening to this audio over your phone or on your cellphone, you can follow along using the printed copy that we dropped off at your apartment. We will publish a video of this Town Hall meeting of recording on our website, which is www.harlemriver.org by the end of next week for you to refer to and for you, for folks that weren't able to join this meeting to watch. Everyone will be muted during the presentation, and then we will have a question and answer session at the end of the meeting. To ask a question during the Q and A, you can type your question in the webinar chat at any time. We will either type a response or answer the question out loud during the Q and A session. You can also raise your hand in Zoom. I will call on you during the Q and A and unmute your microphone so you can ask your question. If you'd like to ask your question out loud like this, if you're using a smartphone and you'd like to raise your hand, tap the screen of the Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear, tap Participants, and then tap Raise Hand. If you are using a computer to join this meeting, move your mouse on the Zoom meeting screen to reveal the toolbar, click Participants and click Raise Hand. Or if you are calling into the meeting using a telephone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand. And again, questions with from from folks who have their hand raised will be answered at the end of the meeting during the Q and A session. So first, just going through our agenda, we'll first hear a message from NICA. Then we will walk through the timeline for, well, I'm sorry, NICA will walk through the timeline for the Harlem River Pact Conversion. We'll talk about the model unit at Harlem River, which will allow folks to see what their apartment actually will look like once the renovation is complete. We'll talk about preparing for what's called Housing Quality Standards Repairs and Inspections. Then we'll talk a bit about lease signing. We'll give an update on training and job opportunities with the Harlem River Preservation Team, and we'll finish up with a nice long Q and A to try to get as many questions answered as we can today. So now I'd like to pass it over to Simon from NICA to give folks a message on this slide and the next. Simon, if you'd like to unmute, please go ahead.
Thanks, Sam. Good evening, everybody. Good to be with you tonight. My name is Simon Kowitski. I am a Vice President in the Real Estate Department here at NICA. And it looks like we have about 50 of your neighbors from Harlem River. So thank you again for joining us this evening. I know we've been on a long road together so far. Just as a quick reminder for anyone who may be coming into this process for the first time or could benefit from, you know, a little bit of a recap on what this is about. PACT is all about bringing comprehensive repairs and upgrades to your development. At the end of this process, you will also have a new property management team take over from NICA and enhance social services available for you to benefit from. Ultimately, we are bringing in the expertise and the resources of private partners. But NICA retains ownership of your development and responsibility for all of you. So the quality of life improvements, the resources and other amenities that we're really excited to bring to you will not come at a cost of any of your rights or protections. NICA will continue to monitor the performance of our partner, ensure that they're doing the job that they need to do to take care of you and keep the property safe and maintained. NICA is going to continue to certify your income every year and tell them what rents they can charge you. Any vacant apartments must be occupied off of the NICA Section 8 waiting list. And again, we remain in the background in an oversight role. So you ultimately will remain a NICA resident, but just under a new model that allows us to bring all these really important improvements to you and ultimately again improve your quality of life. Here's how you can reach out to NICA at any point now or after the new property management team takes over from NICA. We have, for the benefit of those who are calling in on the phone, the number for the Harlem River Property Management Office, that's 212-368-2900. Any questions about PACT, anything whatsoever, you can always email us at pact@nyc.gov. You can call us on our PACT hotline at 212-306-4036. The customer contact center, NICA's customer contact center is also always available to you in case it's ever needed, that's 718-707-7771. And then our website, on.nyc.gov/nica-pact. We're going to be doing in the run-up to the transition to private management, another meeting that really goes over all the details and things that you need to know once that transition takes place, how you're going to be paying your rent going forward, how you're going to continue to certify your income with NICA, who you contact for repair requests or other issues. So a lot more information to come on that. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands all the way up until that point of the management taking transition, NICA is still responsible for making any repairs or addressing any issues you may be experiencing in your home or in your community. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us. I also want to just take a quick moment to recognize that we are aware of the gas, the cooking gas outage at Harlem River Two. I know that it's extremely painful, especially at this time of year when we're all at home with our families. I am awaiting further updates from the management office as to when they would have a sense of the repairs being made and the gas being turned back on. I do know that it was shut down due to a leak in one of the valves. There are hot plates available. If anybody would like a hot plate, they can contact the NICA Management Office. Again, that's 212-368-2900. And again, I'm extremely sorry about the inconvenience at Harlem River Two. We will provide an update as soon as we have more information as to when the gas may be turned back on for cooking. Next slide, please. So in terms of the next steps, I wanted to give a quick update. We're going to be talking a little bit about some, some different aspects of the PACT project tonight. But in terms of timeline, I know that it had been communicated to the Harlem River community that this transition to management would take place by the end of this year in December and that renovations would begin shortly thereafter. Due to a very, a range of different factors, which I can talk about, we're now a little bit delayed, a little bit behind schedule. Hopefully not too far behind schedule, but we don't expect this transition to occur until February of next year at the moment. And of course, we will keep everyone updated as we have a better sense of the process and the timing for when that would begin. Why has this delay happened? I think we all know that COVID has and is continuing to impact all of our lives in different ways. We had to pause work at the beginning of the pandemic to make sure we could implement a safety plan, so that that set us back a little bit as well. We are also just need a little bit more time to finalize all of the rehabilitation plans that we are developing for your community. That includes all of the upgrades to your apartments and common areas, upgrading the infrastructure, the building systems, the electrical systems, elevator, heat and hot water systems, the security and landscape improvements. So as we continue to further refine those things, it's just come to our attention that we need a little bit more time to finalize all those plans, including among those, really importantly, our work to abate lead-based paint at your property. So, you know, the combination of those different things has unfortunately just led us to where we are, and we need a little bit more time to finalize those plans to make sure that we can do the job right and keep everybody safe. So thank you for bearing with us and your patience. Again, I know it's been a long road. We're finally approaching the point where we can actually begin this work and are looking forward to continuing to partner with you to bring these important positive changes to your community. I'll pass it back to the team now, and I'll remain on the line so I can help answer questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Simon. So I'd now like to talk about visiting the model unit at Harlem River. I'm actually in a second going to pass it over to a representative from the general contractor for this project, who will walk you through actual pictures of what this unit looks like. We recently completed the renovation work in this unit. It is a vacant unit at Harlem River. The work in this unit is the same as the work that will be completed in every apartment at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two as part of the conversion. We are planning to host multiple open houses at the unit so that all residents can actually see what their apartment will ultimately look like. We will be doing this in as organized a way as possible. Please look out for a notice in the coming weeks with the date and the time of the open house for your building. We are looking to make time for every person that would like to visit this unit to come, come by and take a look so they can have a look at and see what their apartment will look like once the renovation work is complete. So the following pages show actual pictures of the renovated unit. And again, keep in mind, this is an apartment that is actually in Harlem River. It is a Harlem River apartment where we completed all of the work, or I would say 90%, 95% of the work. Because again, we would like to show residents what this work will look like in their units and allow you to come by and take a look. Again, we will be providing a notice in the short, in the near future, letting you know how you can come by and take a look. So with that, I will pass it over to Eli Himmelstein from L and M Builders, the general contractor, to walk you through these slides.
Thanks, Sam, and good, good evening, everybody. Happy holidays. And now is as good a time as any, as any to say thank you. Thank you to all the residents of Harlem River for all the feedback we've gotten over the last year, which has helped us and the development team in NICA come up with the best scope for, for the renovations here at Harlem River Housing. And also thank you for your patience for allowing us into your apartments to do the HQS repairs, which Sam mentioned briefly, which is ongoing. We're, we are very excited, our team, to be all the more closer to starting the work here. And having the model unit, which you're going to see a few photos of, and hopefully we'll be able to see in person shortly, is an exciting step towards that. Nothing beats, no matter how detailed your plans are, from the, the consultants and the team, which have spent a lot of time and energy developing on what we're supposed to do on this, on this project. Nothing beats actually going to, to the job site and actually performing a model unit and seeing what challenges, if any, we will have, and also getting feedback from the development team, from NICA, from the design team, from your, from your TA board. So we can move to the next slide. This is a photo of the kitchen that you're seeing in front of you. A little bit more of a close-up of the kitchen. Those are the new cabinets, the new flooring, quartz countertops and undermount sink, new plumbing fixtures, including going back to the riser, which you don't see, which is, which is under the sink within the cabinet, new stainless steel appliances, including the range, a range hood and refrigerator. Next slide, please. That's the side of that kitchen with additional counter space and cabinets. And next slide, please. And then we go into the unit itself. One thing, which I think was, which you could see on the first slide, was the, was the lighting. So there's new LED lighting throughout the apartment. It used to be in, in prior PACT or Rad conversions that we were focusing on the bathroom and the kitchen. And I'm really excited and the entire team is excited that we're just doing so much more work in these apartments, from flooring throughout the unit, painting the entire unit, introducing new LED lighting, which you see overhead, not just in the hallway, the bathroom and the kitchen, but in every, every room. I know a lot of us are spending more time at home. Floor lamps just do not provide adequate lighting. We heard that from day one from the residents, and that was something that the developer had us, had us incorporate into the scope. You see the new base molding towards the floor, new hollow metal door, which still has to be painted, but new doors, new hardware on all the doors, new doors throughout the entire apartment. Next slide, please. And you see the hallway going into the bathroom. Next slide, please. And you can see the bathroom itself, new porcelain flooring. Again, completely new fixtures, removing the existing tub, replacing it with a new tub. Tub surround, new vanity, which is on stainless steel legs to keep it above the, above the tile in case there's any water, which typically in a bathroom there is, right? New toilet. Next slide, please. Kind of a bird's eye view of the bathroom. You can see some of the additional accessories. Next slide. And you can see the medicine cabinet and just a peek of the LED light fixture above the, above the vanity and medicine cabinet. This medicine cabinet is, is larger than, it's probably almost twice the size of what residents have right now. So all in all, an exciting finished package. And I think, do we have one additional slide or is that a, one more, I think? So you can get a quick shot of the shower head, the new integrated sink, which is part of the vanity. Again, new, new fixtures. You can't see it in this photo, but we also have grab bars, which are in the, which are in the bathtub. And I believe that, that is it. Oh, I was wrong.
Just a couple, this one and one other, Eli.
Right. So just quickly, this is in, again, there basically is not a space within your apartment that we are not looking at and renovating. So all new flooring, even within the closets, new doors, new hardware, new shelving, new closet rod. You can see that nice 1x4 base molding, which replaces the typical rubber molding, base molding that you'll see on other projects. It's just a, a nice upgraded, clean finish. And next slide, again, another shot of, of the bedroom. The only, the only caveat that I would throw in there, or qualifier rather, is that the, the riser that you see in the background, that will be, once we're ready to install the, your new heating and cooling system, we're going to cut out that riser, so it'll be completely out of the way. Maybe a little easier to put in furniture, hang, hang photos or whatever it might be, but that will no longer be in the, in the apartment. Thanks, Sam.
Thanks so much, Eli. If folks have questions about the finishes, please do feel free to ask. Either in the Q and A, you can type a question and we will either respond in writing or wait for the end. Or please raise your hand, or you don't have to raise it now. You can wait for the end of the chat, the, excuse me, this meeting and ask by raising your hand at the end. And we will be sure to try to get there as many people as possible. I think that Eli will be staying on to answer questions about finishes during the Q and A section. So please do save your questions. So a quick overview of what is next. So it's currently December, as we know. Apartment repairs and inspections for housing quality standards are currently happening. I know many folks have already experienced this. This is typically a pretty quick repair appointment, but it is a requirement for the conversion. We do issue notices and make phone calls and door knocks to schedule a time with you that works. And we're always available to pick up the phone if your repair appointment needs to be, you know, rescheduled or you need some, some kind of accommodation. Please don't hesitate to call us. We're also continuing with lease signings. We just have a few more lease signings to do. A large majority of the, the development has signed new leases. So thank you so much for your flexibility with us as we, with us as we've gone through that process. And then finally, this actually will be the, the following month. Model unit tours will likely begin in January. Again, we will send out a notice and post it in all buildings, letting folks know how to sign up for a slot to, to visit the model unit so you can see what it looks like in person. Winter 2022, so this is January, early February. Apartment repairs and inspections will continue for housing quality standards. We will, of course, have another resident Town Hall. And that Town Hall, as Simon mentioned early in this presentation, will include all the information you need to know about the management transition. It will, will go through how to pay your rent, how to request maintenance, how to access all of the different services that will be bringing to the development with the management transition. That will be at the next Town Hall meeting. The exact date has not been announced yet, but it will be in later January. We will also continue lease signings. There will be hiring and training beginning for jobs with the Harlem River Presentation Team, Preservation Team. We've actually already opened some opportunities, some, some job opportunities with our team. We'll talk a little bit more about it in the later slides in this presentation, but this is a really, really excited to, to welcome residents to apply for jobs that, that are with the team, both construction jobs and permanent jobs. We'd really love to have residents working with us at this development. Spring, so we'll do another Town Hall, of course. Then we will also have the actual conversion. We're scheduled for the month of February, so we're looking forward to actually having the conversion. There will be the property management transition to CNC. Again, as Simon mentioned, NICA will retain ownership of both the lands and the land and the buildings, and CNC will serve as property manager under NICA's oversight. And of course, construction work and temporary moves will begin. We're not going to go through the topic of temporary moves again in this presentation. This is a topic we've discussed at the last two Town Halls, both of which were recorded and posted on our website, www.harlemriver.org. With that said, we will be going through the, that topic again at the next Town Hall, just to remind everyone of what is to come. We'll have, we'll answer all questions that you all have. And then also, please do look out in the next two, in the next few weeks, we'll be dropping off at every apartment a printed document that outlines all of the different details and tells you what to expect with your temporary move. It includes a lot of great information. So that printed document will be dropped off in the next few weeks. And then the next Town Hall meeting, we will go back into the temporary move process in depth to go back through any outstanding questions and talk through any concerns. So now I'm going to pass it over to Priscilla Porter from CNC Management to talk through the next two slides. Priscilla, would you like to unmute your mic?
Good evening, everyone. So I'll be speaking on the HQS repairs and inspections. Thank you, everyone, for joining our team this evening. So preparing for HQS repairs and inspections. HQS repairs and inspections are continuing at Harlem River One and Harlem River Two. These repairs in your unit may include repainting walls, replacing damaged floors and other items. HQS repairs are not the same as the renovation work that will begin in spring of 2022. A notification for your apartment repair will be posted on your door and our team will contact you directly for schedule. HQS repairs are a requirement for all apartments. This work will complete, will be completed as quickly as possible and will be scheduled with your household directly. For COVID-19 safety, keeping residents safe during an apartment work is our number one priority. We will work, we will continue to wear face masks, gloves, booties, and identifying badges when we are in your home, as you can see in the photo. When possible, we will limit the number of staff in your apartment. Please look out for the notices that we will definitely leave on your door and our team will continuously contact you via phone call as well. And if you have any questions and need to make certain arrangements regarding these HQS repair appointments, feel free to contact us via phone or come over to our office, the Old Library, to discuss this with our team in person, and we'll make accommodations as, as necessary. Sam, next slide. As part of the PACT conversion, each household must sign a new lease. Most households at Harlem River One and Harlem River Two have already signed a new lease. If you have not signed your lease, please contact us via the following. You can call us at 212-348-3248, extension 522, excuse me, extension 5222. Or you can email jmelendez@ccmanagers.com. Again, J M E L E N D E Z at ccmanagers.com. Or you can visit us at our office, the Old Library, at 210 West 153rd Street, Monday through Friday, 9 to 4 p.m. You don't need an appointment. Feel free to just drop by if you're choosing to visit our office. Please bring a valid photo ID, such as a driver's license, a non-driver's license permit or any near-death photo ID or a passport. If you feel that you need a home visit and need or need an evening, weekend lease signing appointment, this is also available upon request. Feel free to contact us so that we can make those accommodations as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Priscilla. So I just want to give a quick reminder, this is, we, we've gone through this, this, almost this exact slide in previous meetings, but it's a really important one. So I just want to give a quick reminder about how your resident rights are protected. So current Harlem River residents, and when we say Harlem River, we mean Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two, automatically qualify for Section 8 through the PACT program. So you, there's no, there's no test or anything to, to see if you qualify and, and can, and are part of this program. You're, as a, by nature of living in the developments, either Harlem River Houses or Harlem River Two, you automatically qualify for Section 8. In terms of rent, rent will be 30% of your adjusted gross household income after the conversion. If you currently pay a flat rent, your rent will increase over a five-year period to 30% of your adjusted gross household income. Your PACT lease automatically renews each year. Utilities are included in your rent and any vacancies that occur at Harlem River, and again, Harlem River and Harlem River Two, excuse me, will be filled from the development's site-based waiting list, which is administered by NICA, specifically NICA's Section 8 leased housing department. And Robert Tessera, who manages that department, is actually on the line tonight and I think will be available to answer any questions about the Section 8 program at the end of this, the end of this call during the, the Q and A. So again, there are a number, this is a very quick overview, but your resident, there are a number of ways your resident rights are protected as part of this program, and it's a real priority for us to continuously communicate that to you. So now I'm going to pass it over to Jennifer at L and M to talk through some of the job opportunities that are and will be available at Harlem River Houses and hard, for Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two residents. Jennifer, if you'd like to unmute your mic and move forward.
Hi, hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Fratasselli and I am from L and M Development Partners. I work, I'm a senior manager for our workforce and contractor diversity team, which means I manage, I will be managing the workforce portion of this project. And I'm really excited to talk about what opportunities will be available for you guys. So thank you for having me. So we are committed to giving back to the communities in which we develop in. One of the ways we give back One of the ways we give back is by providing free training and career opportunities to the residents. As we have mentioned in previous meetings, we will be offering job opportunities with both construction and property maintenance. Where we will prioritize Harlem River residents. The construction opportunities will be prevailing wage, full-time positions. They will be entry-level positions, which means little to no experience is required to apply. These opportunities will be temporary, each lasting between three to four months, and will be available once construction begins in twenty twenty two. We have partnered with local labor union, Local Seventy Nine, to provide tenants with construction training. As well as employment opportunities. We will also offer free OSHA forty classes to kickstart their career in the construction industry. We've partnered with various community organizations to ensure that candidates are provided with support. And can access free training in soft skills and interview skills prior to meeting with potential employers. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Uh, so how can you apply? If you're interested in obtaining employment on this project, you can drop off your resume in our Dropbox. Located at two ten West one fifty third Street. We have included a picture on the slide of our Dropbox. You can also email your resume to info at Harlem River dot org. Do you see the picture there? That's what the Dropbox will look like. Uh, please ensure that your resume is updated and it includes your contact information. If you need assistance updating your resume, you can reach out to Nycha Reese. They offer an array of services to get ready for to work on this project. And we can go to the next slide. So uh, job training. We have officially scheduled our first OSHA training for this, for Harlem River residents. The training will begin on January seventeenth, twenty twenty two, and will include seven sessions. To register, you can email us at info at Harlem River dot org. Although hiring will not start until February twenty twenty two, we have begun to post our job opportunities on our website. You can visit W W W dot Harlem River dot org backslash jobs. Or scan the W R code. You see that code right there on the um presentation? If you scan that, it'll take you right to the job descriptions, and you can submit your information for consideration. Uh, thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. So now we're going to move on to the question and answer portion of this uh town hall meeting. Uh, just a quick overview reminder about how to ask a question. You can, first of all, type your question in the webinar chat, and I know some of you have been doing that already. We will either type a response or answer the question out loud. Um, you can also raise your hand in Zoom, and I will call on you. Uh, ask you to unmute your mic, and then you'll be able to answer, you'll be able to ask your question out loud. Um, if you're using a smartphone and you'd like to raise your hand, you can tap the screen of the Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear. Tap Participants and then tap Raise Hand. If you are using a computer, move your mouse on the Zoom meeting screen to reveal the toolbar. Click Participants and click Raise Hand. And if you're calling into the meeting using a telephone. Please dial star nine to raise your hand. I will ask you to unmute, uh, and then you can ask your question. So to start, uh, why don't we go to uh the phone number ending in two six two nine? Would you please unmute your mic and ask your question?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Good evening. I'm calling because I live in Harlem River Two. And I'd like to know when they're going to start on that building.
Sure, we can absolutely answer that. Thank you for the question. So I will answer some of uh this question. Uh, some of this question, and then I will pass it over to our general contractor, Ellie Himmels, or the representative from our general contractor, Ellie Hemmelstein. So the uh, the renovations in the the apartments at Harlem River Two will occur after the renovations in the apartments at Harlem River Houses. With that said, there is a lot of work that's going to be done at Harlem River Two at the exact same time as Harlem River Houses. Um, including work that will start very soon after we um we close. So Ellie, if you can, would you please walk through some of the. The work that will occur. Um, and then I'm I'm going to also pass it over to Priscilla to talk through some some of what the convert. What the conversion will bring to Harlem River Two right after we close. So Ellie, please. Ellie, can you hear us?
I apologize, I had myself unmute. So sure, from day one, as soon as, as soon as um, uh, we get the green light and. The um, the project is closed, we're going to replace the existing sidewalk shed. We're going to make sure that it's in. Uh, excellent condition. It will be a new shed with with uh better lighting. Um, second, if there are any active leaks at the roof, which uh from what we've seen, there there are several. We will be able to address those immediately, weather permitting, weather permitting, meaning as long as it's not under several feet of snow, we'll be able to tackle that. And get um the roof temporarily repaired. Uh, bigger picture, we'll be looking to start masonry repairs, roofing. Eventually looking at cladding the tower, uh, looking at getting inside to all of these stairwells and hallways and upgrading the existing lighting. Uh, to new LED light fixtures, which is just going to be brighter, safer, put illuminated exit signs, uh, the appropriate areas. Um, looking at replacing with um with the management company, uh, looking at making sure that all doors are secured. And just a a whole host of uh scope that we'll be able to start at the tower, regardless of whether or not we'll be. Uh, starting with your with your apartments first. I know there's been a lot of focus on the schedule, and we've certainly be put, been pushed by the development team. To provide one, but I think everyone understands that there's a lot that's in flux. We're hearing the feedback from the residents. And bottom line, we want to get the work done as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
Thank you, Ellie. And Priscilla, would you talk through a bit about what the uh the transition will bring to residents of both Harlem River Houses? And Harlem River Two? Yes, I'm sorry.
I had another question.
Yes, absolutely. Can I, so just before you ask another question, I just want to make sure that we get through your first question, and there's still a bit more about. What the conversion will mean for Harlem River Two. So I just wanted uh Priscilla to talk through for a second. Um, Priscilla, could you just say a bit about what the conversion will mean for Harlem River Two when closing occurs? So security, property management, if you would talk through that for a second.
Sure, I'll I'll go quickly. Um, I know that uh she has another question. So our our teams uh will be looking to bring a dedicated staff. To hone in on the uh requests from the residents. So we'll be looking to have our. All proper maintenance staff to uh to come in and have a proper schedule for cleaning. Uh, we'll also be looking to have a dedicated staff uh to take care of landscaping. Uh, like I said, cleaning, a dedicated schedule, because um that obviously is one of the needs of the residents. We'll have se- security presence. We'll also be looking to uh undertake work orders, uh, day-to-day repairs and things of that nature. And just being the face and presence for the residents on day-to-day communication that is very much needed. Um, for day-to-day management and upkeep of the development and also units um. For Harlem River Houses one and two. Sorry, uh, ma'am, you can proceed.
Okay. I have a washing machine. And fans, overhead fans, and I didn't see a place for those. In the um. Model.
Yeah, so that's a, that that, yep, that's a great question. Um, so in general, the um, the renovations that are planned for the units. Um, are standard, they're planned for all of the, all of the units. With that said, if there are particular things in the, in your unit that you would like. Um, we're absolutely happy to talk to you about accommodations. Um, I would, I would say that there are a number of things that will very likely make it unnecessary to have certain things that many residents do have. Um, once the work is complete. So for example, the um, heating and cooling system will be electrified. And all residents will have a system in their home that provides both heating and cooling. So many residents, as of now, have a window air conditioning unit. Or an overhead fan, and they'll now have installed a central, uh, essentially a central air. A central unit that will provide both heating and cooling. We'll also be um installing three. Um, laundry rooms um with washers and dryers um in the development. Um, but again, if there are specific needs that you have in your unit, specific requests that you'd like to make. Um, we do invite you to let us know about that um as part of the uh. As part of the the process, we will be meeting with every resident, one-on-one, uh, every household, I should say. Uh, so when we do reach out to you to schedule those meetings, we invite you to let us know any particular accommodation that you'd like to be considered. Uh, and we'd love to discuss it with you at that time. So I want to move to um another question. Um, uh, apologies if I pronounce this incorrectly. Joni Acevedo, would you please unmute your mic and ask your question?
Good evening. My name is Joni Acevedo, and I'm calling and I'm listening into everything that's going on with the reservation. Preservations and everything's going on, but I want to know is that um. This is something that's already been in the works to fix. But I want to know is that. Is it being bought for the tenants to buy the apartments? Or how this is going to go? Because from from what I understanding is, that it's another company that's coming in to fix everything. To make everything okay and fix everything on that. But I think personally, there's other stuff under the table that you're not telling the tenants. Either they're going to have the rights to buy the apartments, or what's going on? Because there's a lot of stuff that I'm I'm. I'm noticing and I'm looking into things, different things that's going on for all the developments. But personally, I want to know what the real deal is. I understand that they want to fix the apartments and everything, and the. From what I'm hearing, that the tenant association presence will offer twenty-five thousand dollars to give up to the PAC, the PAC program. And this was already implemented somewhere else in the Bronx. I get it that they want to fix everything on that, but there's always an agenda to everything that's going on.
Sure, so what?
For having to come in, yes.
Yeah, thank you so much for that question. So I'd like to um pass it over to Simon from Nycha to take that question. Simon, do you mind answering?
Yeah, um, good evening, Ms. Acevedo. Thanks for for your comment. Um, I I will say there's a lot of misinformation out there. Uh, about the PAC program and about the work at Harlem River specifically. Um, it's absolutely untrue that any residents are being offered any buyouts or any amount of money. Um, I think what happens is that a lot of this sounds too good to be true. And there are certainly a lot of trust issues uh between Nycha uh and our residents over the years. And so I certainly understand why people would be skeptical about um our intentions here, but. Our goal is simply to improve your quality of life and bring these improvements to your homes. Um, this is not anything. New or different that we're doing. This is a tried and true program that HUD created um in twenty twelve that we're taking advantage of. To raise funding for repairs. Um, that's simply, you know, what we're doing. Uh, and uh, how we're trying to, um, again, make those important upgrades and improve your quality of life. Um, this is a program that HUD closely regulates. They review all of the information, all the materials. Um, the plans, the financing, all of the money and budgeting HUD has to review and approve, and they're doing that right now with us. Um, and we've already done this across the city. There are over ninety-five hundred apartments. All across the city that have already transitioned to private management through the PAC program. And are at different stages of the construction process. A number of developments have already completed construction. Um, many others are still in the middle of construction, and so this is really a tried and true model. Um, that we're using here in New York City and that other housing authorities are using across the country. Um, again, I recognize the trust issues, and that's something that I think we're only going to be able to resolve. By uh allowing our actions to speak for themselves. Um, I am confident that everybody is going to be very pleased with the end result. Um, that doesn't mean it's not going to be difficult. Construction is always a challenge. Um, there are going to be some painful moments, as we all know, but. Um, that that's what we're doing here, and that's the simple truth.
Thank you, Simon. I'd like to go over and see if the Spanish line has any questions. Spanish line, give us any questions? Great.
Please hold. No question on the Spanish line so far.
No questions. Thank you. And uh, from the Chinese line, any questions so far?
No question either.
Great. So we'll move back to the raised hands. Um, would I sat to uh Canute? Uh, please um unmute your mic and ask your question. I said to, can you hear us? Can you hear us, I said to? I think that worked. Hello, yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon. How are you?
I'm great. Good afternoon.
Yeah, my name is Isat. My question is, uh. When they want to repair the apartment? We, we have a. Another place to be there until they finish to repair the apartment or not? Because, you know, we have a lot of stuff, you know?
Yes, that is a great question. Thank you for asking that, I said to. So um, when the repairs occur, so first of all, um, these are, this is a question that is been asked um in previous meetings. So I will give, I'm going to give up an answer to it, um, but there is definitely a lot more information about this question. Um, in the previous meeting recordings on our website, so I do encourage you to go to our website. Um, and and listen to previous town hall meetings. But with that said, I will also answer. So um, when the repairs occur. Um, residents will not be in their their unit. So when we, before we go and and schedule your unit, we will reach out to you. At least thirty days in advance, at least thirty days in advance to schedule um a conversation with your household. Um, to let you know the date of your temporary move, uh, and also to, of course, answer any questions, to hear about any. Um, special accommodations that you need. Um, we will also provide you with a number of different. Um, uh, you know, pieces of support. Um, and we will, we will um provide packing tape, boxes. Um, movers uh to move your belongings um that you need during the renovation to a temporary accommodation. All temporary accommodations are inside of Harlem River. Um, so you will be living with your family in a comparably sized unit as what you currently live in. Um, and the unit will already have been renovated. So it will be a unit that is vacant. No one lives there right now. We will already have renovated it, and we will set it up with furniture, um, with wifi uh and cable. Um, and that will be your temporary accommodation for the duration of your move. Um, you can leave your your furniture and your belongings. In your current unit. When you go and move, do this temporary move, which will last for six weeks. For your items that remain in your apartment, we will provide a moving team to help you box everything up so that it can be protected. And then when the actual uh construction work occurs, your items will be um clustered in the center of your apartment. And covered with several coats of of plastic sheeting to protect them from any damage. So to answer your question simply. No, you will not be in your unit during the work itself. It is unsafe to be in there because it will be a construction site. But you will be still in Harlem River. You will be in a vacant unit at Harlem River that has already been renovated. And we will provide you with a number of different pieces of support uh to help you move to that unit temporarily. You will get a financial stipend to cover out-of-pocket expenses. Um, and we'll provide a lot of different pieces of support so that you feel comfortable uh and that your needs are accommodated. Um, the the document that we're going to send out in the next few weeks to every single apartment includes a lot more information about this. We hope that will answer most of your questions. Um, but we also do invite you to keep coming to this meeting as well as our next town hall meeting. Please visit our management office. Um, this is obviously a very complicated process, and we really do appreciate this question. We want you to feel. Please visit our management office. This is obviously a very complicated process, and we really do appreciate this question. We want you to feel comfortable. That you'll be, your your needs will be met during your your temporary move. Will last for six weeks, and we look forward to continuing to answer these questions. So with that. I will move on to. Migdalia Peña, would you please unmute your mic?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, how are you? Good afternoon.
Great, good afternoon.
I'm calling from Harlem River One. So it looks like those pictures that you just, we just saw. It doesn't even look like the apartments in on this building on twenty eight fifty eight thousand. And I want to ask you another question. Right now, the whole entire building is without gas. So what's the situation with that?
Sure. Simon, do you want to take, do you mind answering this question about the gas at Harlem River Two?
Yeah, sure. You know, when when I spoke earlier, I I mentioned that we are aware of the gas issue at Harlem River Two. I connected with the property manager this evening, and they're still working on getting their vendors in to give them an estimate of when the work could begin and they could turn the cooking gas back on. Or if they'd be able to turn on some of the gas to some apartments while they continue to work on the the rest of the lines that are affected. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer right now. We will send out notifications as soon as we have more information on the status of that work. I I know it's an extremely difficult time for this to have happened. There are hot plates available, I'm told. If you reach out to the management office, they would be provided to anyone in need. In the meantime, but again, I unfortunately don't have updates to share right now, but we can. Be sure to share more about the timing for when the gas would be back on as soon as we know more.
Okay, I understand that part, but the thing is that they give out the hot plate, but. I have a big family. I have three children in the house plus myself. And it took me today only with one hot plate. Almost four hours to cook. You know, so if if they were to say, you know, let me give. Two half plates to a big family, that will be okay. But one, just one half plate is is not enough for us to even cook for a meal for a day, you know?
Simon, is this something that, is is this something that residents can go to the property management office about?
Yeah, I I was just gonna say, you should be able to ask if you could have a second hot plate. If there are any issues. I, can you message us privately and we can look into making sure that you can get that second hot plate if needed?
Okay, so where should I send you the email?
Can somebody on the on the line from the team reach out to you if we have your information? I'm not sure the best way to get your information, but we can follow up with you directly.
Yeah, Migdalia, I'll I'll follow up with you directly. I'm gonna write you a message right now, and if you could send me just your contact information, we'll be sure to get in touch with you.
Okay, so you're gonna do it through chat, right?
Yes, I just sent you a message. I also want to answer your other question, because you did actually ask two questions, and the other one is a is quite a good one. You mentioned that the, and correct me if I'm saying this wrong, that the the images of the the model unit that that all apartments will look like, looks, the layout looks different. Is that, is that what you said?
Yes, it doesn't look like the layout of the apartments on this building.
Right. So Ellie, Ellie from L and M Builders, do you mind talking about just sort of how, sort of what the model unit is and how the the work will, like the the extent of the work in units that are different layouts than the model unit?
Yeah, to the residence question, the developer and actually NICA had had already requested that. The general contractor provide another model unit in the tower itself. So you'll have a better example of of how the layouts will look within your building. But in general. What you're seeing there is exactly what you're going to get in the tower. It's just a slightly different configuration. So same size cabinets, same appliances, same flooring, same finishes. No no one's looking to differentiate between the the towers and and the low rise building. But stay tuned. Hopefully, within, you know, the next few months, we'll have a a completed model unit in the in the tower as well.
And also, as far as I'm concerned. They're not gonna start this building yet, right?
So I can take that one. Thank you for the question. So for the in-unit renovation, so the the big construction work in the the apartments themselves, that is correct. The apartments at Harlem River Houses will be first. But again, I I don't know if you were on on the line when this was discussed, but. But that does not mean that no work will occur at Harlem River Two. There's a lot of work that will occur right away. And also the property management transition that is happening, so CNC apartment management coming in and serving as property manager will also be at Harlem River Two right away. So that means repairs that are needed. It means security. It means social services. And then also Ellie talked through some of the building upgrades, so there will, there will be repair of major leaks. And other types of work that will occur at Harlem River Two, starting right away.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I just muted you by accident, Migdalia.
Okay, so what, because the the door on the front building. Is not secure, and I don't feel secure anymore in the building. This door is always open, and if it's closed, the key doesn't work. And it's it's a it's a lot of hassle, and I'm a single mom. I went downstairs the other day through the staircase because the elevator wasn't working. And and he was a man on the staircase that I never seen in the building. I I felt scared going downstairs with my kids. You know, it it's it's not fair that we had to go through all this situation, and nobody is taking note about all this situation that we are going through here. And and I'm not going to talk about the other tenant, but I'm talking about myself. My rent is paid today. I don't give no problem to housing, to anybody. I I'm a good tenant. So I'm always talking about for myself and my family. But it it's not fair that we have to go through all this just because somebody else is going to take over and nobody's taking care of business in the building.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. That's such, that's really, really disturbing. So first of all, Simon, is this something that the the issues with the door at at twenty eight fifty, is this something, I'd like to escalate that to NICA? So Simon, I'll I'll love to talk to you offline about that. And then Ellie. Can you talk through some of the security upgrades that will occur at the tower and really actually across the developments, but specifically at the tower? Can you talk through some of the improvements that we'll be making for with regard to security?
Yeah, surely, just briefly, because I believe you mentioned the elevators. We've already secured a contractor for the elevators. We're getting shop drawings. We're we're trying to prep everything so that when the property does close and we get the green light from Harlem River Preservation, we can hit the ground running and modernize both of those, both of those elevators. In terms, in terms of security, we received a lot of feedback on this from NICA, from the residents, from the development team. And basically, you're looking at upgraded lighting throughout the site. So as someone is walking home, you know, back, back from work, back from school, whatever, the the paths themselves will be more clearly lit. There'll be cameras on all the building exteriors, which will be monitored by CNC's security staff and as well as recorded. And within the building, them, buildings themselves, whether it's the stairwells or the common area hallways that you have in the tower as well as the stairwells. In the low-rise buildings, there will be cameras there as well. So it's a pretty. It's a pretty advanced system, and the idea is just to create a safer environment for the for the residents as monitored by CNC's security staff.
Thank you, Ellie. I just, I I do want to give other folks a chance to ask questions. I know there's a lot in here, so I do want to move on. Can we please have the number ending in three, one, seven, seven, unmute your mic and ask your question?
Yes. Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Like, like what Ms. Acevedo was saying, it's like, there's a hidden agenda here. It's like, why are you giving elderly tenants some who don't speak English eviction notices? You want us to sign leases with CNC Management, they're slum lords. You promising us, promising us all these amenities, which don't make a difference, it's just more to clean. And prior to that, my last question is, you had three meetings about relocation. The first one, you said that you would relocate us to one of the buildings, the apartments that are already renovated. The next one, you said, oh, well, you could go stay with some relatives or whatever you have to do, we'll give you some money, blah, blah, blah. Now you're back to, oh, you can go stay in a renovated apartment. Can you clarify yourself? Because you're not making sense, really. You're not making any sense whatsoever.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to answer those questions. So I'll answer. Hold on a second. I will answer the last question that you asked, and then I'm going to pass it over to Simon to answer your other questions. So for your temporary move, apologies if there was any confusion. Every single household will have access to an onsite temporary accommodation that is renovated. Every household, if you would like, has access to an onsite accommodation that is vacant, that is, that will be fully renovated, that will have furniture, wifi and cable. The opportunity to also to to choose to stay with family or friends is just if you would like to. Folks that would like to do that, that are more comfortable doing that, are free to do so. We will provide, we are providing a financial stipend, no matter what you your household chooses to do. If you stay with family or friends, we anticipate folks in that situation may have more out of pocket expenses. So the stipend is higher if you choose to do that option. But that does not mean that you don't have access to the the vacant renovated unit at the development, if that is what you prefer. So when we meet, I I mentioned this before, when we, before your temporary move, you will, we will reach out to you at least thirty days in advance. To to let you know the date and time and logistics about your temporary move, and at that point. We will share much more information and talk through all your questions one on one. About these different options. In general, they are the ones that I mentioned, which is, again, you can stay in a temporary vacant unit at the red, at the development that has already been renovated. Or you can, if you feel more comfortable, you can stay with family or friends. Simon, I know we we've gotten this question already, but do you want to, do you want to address the concerns about sort of, you know, a different, some sort of motive and also about lease signing? And I know if Robert also wants to jump in on that, that would be great.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify the question?
Yeah, I think the tenant just asked for, just asked kind of why they have to sign new leases, and maybe that's a question that's better suited for Robert. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I I can speak to that, and Robert, please feel free to chime in. You know, the lease is really critical because it's what one actually protects you. It locks in your rent at being thirty percent of your adjusted gross household income. It sets forth all of your rights as a tenant. And sets out certain forms of recourse and remedies that you can pursue in case of any issues with the property manager. It also ensures that your family members could have succession rights to your apartment if you ever move away. There are a lot of really critical things in the lease document that, you know, when we talk about how PAC preserves your rights and protections are actually included and contained within the lease document. And remember, the lease has been fully vetted by the Legal Aid Society. And we also have the hotline where anyone can call and get free advice from a legal aid attorney if they have questions about the lease specifically. But really importantly, also, the lease is what allows us to turn on the funding. If we don't have signed leases from our residents, HUD does not allow us to convert to this more lucrative and more stable source of funding called Project Based Section Eight. So it's really important for a number of reasons that everybody sign their lease. And again, we provide free legal assistance to anyone who has any questions or is nervous about signing or has any specific issue about their personal tenancy or personal situation that they want clarified. To address your other question, I mean, I I can attest that the partners CNC are not slum lords. We have partnered with them on a number of other projects that have been immensely successful. Again, the whole point of this program is to provide you with better resources, better property management services than you're currently receiving today from NICA, and I work for NICA. And I can honestly say that you are going to be better served at Harlem River by the team CNC and their partners than you are by NICA. I mean, that's just self-evident if you are a resident. And I, again, I I fully believe that you'll be happy once the work is done. It's not going to be easy. But. That is our goal.
Thank you, Simon. I I just want to check and see if we have any questions on the Spanish translation line.
No questions on the Spanish line so far, Sam.
Okay, thank you. And also on the Chinese line?
No questions. On the other line.
Thank you so much. So let's go back to the chat. Could I please have the number ending in four, two, zero, eight, unmute your mic and ask your question?
Hello.
Hello, how are you, man?
My question was, I guess, the same as the ladies, because. The picture that y'all have, the wall is flat. I'm in my kitchen right now, and I have a pipe at my ceiling coming all the way down to my stove. So. How is my wall gonna look like the picture that I'm seeing on this paper?
Great, thank you so much for that question. Ellie, I I'm not sure of that specific condition, but Ellie, do you want to take that?
Yeah, that's a great question. You you were, you were paying attention. So and and I probably should have spoke to that when when we were going through the pictures. So right now, most of the units, if not all of them, have a gas riser right behind the the range. And what happens with that is two things. First of all, you're not able to back your range all the way against the wall. So things, things fall behind there. But also, more more importantly, you, we wouldn't be able to install a range hood, which is a nice addition to the apartment. It helps vent any, any cooking gases or, you know, whether it's steam or grease that's that that you're cooking with. Away from, away from the range, you wouldn't be able to install that directly above the range. Because there isn't a wall behind the range. There's a, there's a gas riser. So what we, what we've done, and this will be a lot easier to see when you come hopefully to see the unit in person. But what we've done is we've, we've basically furred out a wall in front of that gas riser. So you're seeing a new sheet rock wall. So this allowed us to do a couple of things. First of all, it doesn't take up a lot of space from the existing kitchen. You know, they're they're still basically the size that they were beforehand, but it gives us a nice clean wall to be installing all the new cabinets. It allows us to relocate the electrical outlets to more convenient areas. And to your point, it allows us to conceal the gas riser and hang the new, the new range hood.
So I have another question. Then that I have a washing machine. My hose is connected to my sink. If you put in the sink in the middle, how is my hose gonna reach it?
We're gonna reconnect. That's that's one of the things that we do for the residents who do have washing machines. If you want to get rid of it, because the developer is is adding a a centralized laundry room in.
No, I don't want to get rid of my washing machine. I like doing my laundry at home.
Understandable. So i- if if the, if as a resident, you want to keep your washing machine, that's fine, and we'll reconnect it to the existing plumbing. We'll make sure that it's not leaking, and then it has a new plumbing connection. So that's, that's part of our scope.
All right, thank you.
Sure, great question.
Thanks so much. Okay. Let's move on to another question. Can I please have? The, I'm trying to pick folks that haven't asked yet, that I think the number ending in five, four, one, four. Would you please unmute your mic and ask your question? Can you hear us?
Did you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Yes, yes, we can hear you. Hi, sir.
Yeah, how you doing? So I
Great, how are you?
I got two questions. I got two questions about the, the construction job, like, is it a three year job? For a nicer resident?
That's a great question. Uh, Jennifer, do you want to take that question about construction jobs?
Sure, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, so uh, as of right now, um, the, I'm, I am unsure of the projections for the jobs and the opportunities. Right now, the opportunities that are available, um, we know are um jobs that will last between three and four months. Um, but I am unsure if um we are able to potentially take those and continue on and move them to other positions potentially. Um, my coworker Judy Gerina is managing the workforce on this project. Um, and she is currently unavailable at this time. She's on vacation. So she would may know more about the longevity of the construction jobs. Um, but at the moment, I know that the timeline given for the uh opportunities available are between three and four months for constru- for temporary construction.
So sir, with that in mind, um, given that Judy is on vacation for that, just for Christmas, um, we really do encourage you to drop off, even if you're just interested in learning more information, it doesn't, there's no commitment. You know, you, you, if you're not, you know, and if you end up just wanting more information, that's totally fine. But if you do want um to chat, to talk with us about jobs, we really, really would love to. We have a Dropbox um that's just located right outside our office. And if you want to just drop your resume in, if you have your um, your contact information on there, we can reach out to you uh and talk more once Judy is back in the office and we'll be able to answer your question more specifically.
Okay. I mean, I, I, that, that ain't really getting me nowhere because the fact that you're, you're doing the OSHA classes for everybody, for the residents. And then, you know, like I do construction and it's like, I know about the prevailing wage job, like, I was gonna act like, what's, what's the starting salary? Like, I, I know about these things because I, I've seen developments done. I've seen the developments done already in Brooklyn, in in certain parts of Brooklyn, the same exact format, the same exact layout is the same as how you're doing here in Harlem River. So I already see, I, I don't need to go and see the, the reservation because I, I've seen this for many times already, what they, what they did with um a lot of projects in Brooklyn. And they made it look, you know, nice, they, the, the inside, the outside is cool. But I just want to know about the people, the prevailing wage jobs because I know they pay good money. So I want to know
Absolutely, yeah.
So
Yeah, and we
I don't know about that, so.
Yeah, I definitely, we definitely want to answer, answer the question. It's just a matter of, I, um, we'd love to have that conversation with you. Uh, the, the, the individual that is managing jobs and hiring for this project is just away for Christmas. Um, I believe she gets back in early January, so I just really do invite you to drop off your resume in our Dropbox. And just note that you're interested in discussing prevailing wage positions and then we can reach out to you directly um and and have a conversation with you. And the, the individual Judy who manages the uh hiring for this project will be able to share more information with you. That answers your question.
All right, well, one more thing before we go.
Yes, please.
In, in the kitchen, it shows like on the, on the paper, it shows like the, the, the sink and everything is on the opposite side of the wall. Am I seeing that correctly or is that? Because I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out because, you know, some people got two bedroom, three bedroom, one bedroom, so everybody can look possibly the same. So I'm trying to figure out, like, as I'm looking at the paper, I'm thinking like, well, so are they gonna move the, the, the sink area to that, to the opposite side? Like, it's already on the, on the right hand side. So you're gonna move it to the left hand side or how that's working?
But so I can, I can, I can talk to you construction because you, you clearly know what you're talking about. So the, the quick, the quick, the quick answer is that the wet wall is gonna stay in the existing area. We're not repositioning any of the plumbing. That would just be way too invasive and and the truth is, the layouts are, are fine. So we're, we're keeping things exactly where they're located. So your sink will stay where your sink is. It's just essentially uh new.
So where, where's that extra key gonna be at? Because I'm looking, I'm like, where's that? Is it gonna be on the corner right here?
Sorry, in that, in that second, that second photo with that smaller cabinet?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so there, there are, yeah, so that, that, they're roughly, and it's changed because they revised the drawings, but they're roughly eight or nine different layouts within the property. Um, they're, they're.
But you're only giving us, you're only giving us the layout that's showing to everybody in, in Harlem River. Like, that's the same as on a paper. It's not showing no two different sides or anything.
Right, even, even within Harlem River, there, there are multiple layouts. But to your point, I think we got to get that additional model unit in place. Uh, and then it'll be a lot clearer to, to residents. But essentially, if you have a wall right now with cabinets on it or or fixtures in your kitchen or bathroom, that's gonna stay within the same location.
Yeah, and just to, just to be clear, the model unit is, is meant to show you, show folks the finishes and the work that will occur. It doesn't mean that everyone, there, there are different configurations, different sizes of units. There's studios and one bedrooms and two bedrooms, three bedrooms, all different sizes of units. What we wanted to do is we wanted to, as quickly as possible, just give you, give folks a sense and and have you be able to look at the, the finishes um and and the quality of the work to give you an idea of what your apartment will look like. The, the, the work itself, though, will be, will fit the unit that you actually live in. We are gonna, we are continuing, we're, we're gonna continue to actually do these renovations in part because we're renovating units in advance of any of the temporary moves because these are the units that will host temporary moves. And again, the unit that you live in, the, the finishes will be, will be constructed in your unit to fit your unit size.
All right, and these TVs I got mounted on my wall that I paid for, I got receipts and everything. Am I gonna get complimented for that? Because, you know, I got TVs mounted to the wall, I gotta take these down myself and I didn't put them up myself.
Yeah, so we will be uh paying to have televisions removed from the wall and then we will also um hang it back up uh at the end of construction. You do not need to pay for that. That will be covered by the developer. Both taking it down as well as putting it back up.
All right, thank you.
And we will, we will work with your household directly so that we make sure that we're putting it in the right place. Um, uh, but yes, we will, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, a one on one conversation with your household to make sure that it is taken down appropriately and then just before you move back in after the temporary move, that it is hung back up according to where you'd like it to go.
Okay.
Thanks for your questions.
Yep.
Thanks so much. Okay. Um, let's take another question. We have about fifteen minutes left. Um, could I please have, um, I'm sorry, if I mispronounce this, Jahar, um Jahar Hassan Ferrer um unmute, unmute and ask your question?
Hello?
Hello, hi, ma'am.
Hi, um, I have several, um, my daughter was always lived with me and um she has four children. During the time that she was living with me, um, she applied for housing. Uh, it's been about thirteen years she's been on the waiting list. However, the for, the housing forced her to leave my apartment because of the amount of kids that she has. Yet they still never um approved her or gave her an interview to actually go see an apartment or anything like that. So right now, she's um, she's living in a, in a house um that she's renting an apartment and so she wanted to know, does that um disqualify her? Because now it's like, it's taking longer and when she called, they said um that they don't find her in the system.
So I'm not sure about that particular case. So, um, Robert, do you want to, I, I don't know if you're able to address that? Robert Tessararo from NICA?
Yeah, hi, hi, this is Robert from Section Eight. Are you talking about a Section Eight application? Because the Section Eight waiting list has been closed since two thousand nine. And uh, if it's public housing, that list is still open. So she needs to call the customer contact center on that.
Yeah, it's public housing. She's been on already thirteen years.
Okay, does she have access to the uh, the portal? Because if she can go on the portal, she can see whether her case is active or not. If it's not active, she's gonna have to reapply. So that's very important that she confirms if her case is active or not. But on the Section Eight side, there's, there's no vouchers that were gonna be given uh for this deal. Uh, the Section Eight is only for in place public housing residents that will be converting uh at Harlem.
Okay, well, I reside in Thrasnet.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I reside in Thar- in Thrasnet.
Oh, Thrasnet. Okay, uh, yeah, no, so again, uh, same thing. I, I really recommend that she either call the customer contact center, go on the portal and if it's closed, to reapply because uh the public housing waitlist is still open, but not Section Eight.
Okay, and my other question is, it says, um, you know, I find it, it's more like a concern, um, because we, this deep, it's gonna be two. The elevators where we live at, you know, they, I live on the eleventh floor and my apartment is always shaking like the building is cracking because the roof, um, the elevator hits the roof and you can hear the elevator slam onto it. And a few times, people have gotten stuck on it. I've been telling Ms. Johnson, um, the the Tenant Association President about the situation and she's saying that there's not enough fundings to cover. Or at least, yeah, so it's just, it's getting out of control.
So Ms. Ferrer, just that, just to understand, are you a Harlem River, Harlem River Two resident?
I'm sorry?
Are, just so I understand, are you a resident of Harlem River Houses or Harlem River Two?
No.
Okay, so this, this presentation and this conversation is specifically geared towards the scope of work um and questions that are pertaining to, to Harlem River. So I'm just, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to answer um questions about another development um at this time, because this is specific to Harlem River.
Okay, so let, let, let's talk about it. Um, my greatest concern is that my cousin lives down on South Street Seaport. Um, and they have a, a sink in the kitchen, no cabinets or anything, complete mold, which looks like foam growing out of her walls. And they have a sink that looks like a potty, you know, and she's suffering. She's a nine eleven victim. She has lumps all over her, her chest because she has cancer. So not only is she absorbing all of that, she's also getting repeatedly sick and having to be admitted into the hospital because they're not doing their job in, in Manhattan at all. So, you know, I wanted to know, what can she do? Because she's been looking for resources and I posted up a video for her um where it shows how much of the damage and what they're not doing. Her ceiling is falling, it's a lot of things going on and she lives by the FDR, which is not helping because every time that there's, you know, water rising, her apartment is consuming enough damage and they're not repairing anything at all.
Yes, ma'am. So I, I'm, I'm gonna actually direct you. Uh, would you mind please reaching out directly to Simon Kavitsky over the chat? Um, it sounds like there are a number of issues that you'd like to discuss and I, I just want to make sure that they are addressed. Um, I do also want to make sure that this presentation, that we have time for folks that have questions about Harlem River. So ma'am, please do reach out to Simon over the chat. Um, and, and uh, please do ask your questions uh and we want to make sure that, that we get you to the right place and also make sure that we take some more questions about Harlem River. So I'd like to keep moving. Um, could, would Michelle Johnson, please unmute your mic and ask your question? Michelle, can you hear us? You should be able to unmute your mic.
Hey, hello?
Hi, Ms. Johnson, how are you? Yep, we can hear you.
So glad you called.
No problem.
This is gonna happen today.
Lots of questions.
Yes, I have so many questions, okay, because I, but I was reading through the notes and I see that you guys said you're not gonna make the apartment smaller and that, um, one of the people said about PAC, um, I see that you have, okay, I wanted to piggyback off what Joni said when she asked the question earlier about us purchasing an apartment ourselves. So I know that you guys wanna purchase the apartment because a lot of people don't. I, I've been around the neighborhood and I realize a lot of people do not want Section Eight. Section Eight rules are completely different from NICA's rules. It's not completely different, but it's somewhat different from NICA's rules. So, um, and that's a reason why. But the, the thing is, is that why cannot, why, why can't we have the option of purchasing apartments ourselves? HPD has a program called TILT and they are, they, they're able to help people that lives in these, in, in, in apartments. And we could purchase the apartment ourselves and then have a co-op. Why isn't that afforded to us? We lived in these, I've been here since nineteen ninety one and I don't see why that I have to go from one program, one, one rule, one set of rules uh with NICA and then go to Section Eight. I don't want to deal with Section Eight. I would prefer to deal with just pay a maintenance and owning my own property. Why, I mean, while she having a share in the property. Why, why you guys are not giving us, uh, um, speaking on that and allowing us that option and just shoving the Section Eight down our throat? I have many other questions, but since I've been on hold for so long, you know, that's irrelevant.
Um, sure, yeah, we're happy, I'm happy to uh get, try to get an answer to that question. Um, I do want to have Simon address why sort of NICA's uh decision making in having the PAC program um apply at Harlem River. Simon, would you like to take this one?
Sure, uh, good evening, Ms. Johnson. So uh, there are different kinds of pro- of Section Eight and I just want to clarify uh the kind of Section Eight that we're talking about here and how this works. So many people are familiar with uh the Section Eight voucher that you can take and use to rent an apartment on the private market. That's, that's what most people think about when they think about Section Eight and you're absolutely correct that um the program is very different from public housing. That essentially allows you, that voucher allows you um to rent an apartment from a private landlord and it pays a certain amount of money and you have to pay the difference between what that voucher will pay and um the rent for that apartment. Project Based Section Eight is actually attached to your apartment and your development. It doesn't travel with you. Um, it works the same, in the same way that the public housing program works where now HUD, the federal government, provides us with a subsidy that we use um to pay for the operations and maintenance of your development. The difference between the public housing program and Project Based Section Eight is that Project Based Section Eight provides us with more funding per apartment so we can take better care of your development. Um, and it's a more stable source of funding. So, you know, as with public housing, funding goes up and down depending on congressional allocations and budgeting processes. Um, we're guaranteed a certain level of funding year over year and that certainty allows us to raise the money that we need to, to take care of these repairs. Um, so I just want to clarify that these are very different types of Section Eight programs. Um, and HUD created this initiative that allows us to actually transition from public housing to Project Based Section Eight um in a very specific way. So we're actually, yeah.
Okay, the, the thing is, is not so much because when David Patterson was in office, apparently Section Eight disappeared. Okay, and a lot of people was in the shelters. And I know that you're saying that that's possibly not gonna happen. But the same funding that you're getting to fix and to keep the, um, keep the, a property um, keep the property up, we can still get that same funding that we went through HPD and got, was on a TILT program and had the co-op. If we had a, as a co-op, what would happen is that we will be in charge of managing our own, our own maintenance, our, the people, the grounds and keeping up the grounds. There's a lot of people in Harlem River that's been here for years and years that goes out in the park, is sitting in the park, work and, and they're retired and they would not mind making sure the grounds are done. I don't see why that us owning the property or having some share in the property that why that option is taken off the table? And that's, that's the, that's the real question. Not so much in Section Eight and all this other stuff. The question is, why is that taken off the question for us? Is it because, because, is it because we are a people of minority? Or that we, we don't even get that question? I mean, we don't even get that, get, get to have that um option up? Because we, we, we want to own our own things as well. We've worked many jobs. I worked for the city, I worked for the city for twenty years already. And why I don't have the option, every time I get a raise, my rent goes up. And that, owning my own property, I wouldn't have to go through the same, I wouldn't have to go through that.
Sure, I, I mean, I can respond to that and we've looked into this. Um, the way that this program is set up doesn't actually allow us to sell the properties to residents. It was conceived of by HUD as a rental program that continues to function in the same way as public housing functions. Um, now, if there's interest in um, participating in all the benefits that are created, like job creation. You know, the team on the call definitely talked about opportunities to um, plug job seekers into opportunities, either in construction. Or the management of the development, um, there's also.
We have that through Reis, so, I, I understand that, so through Reis, we, we, we're able to get all of those programs, and they have all the opportunities, that's fine, that's.
Right, but the team here, the, the team here is gonna be promoting specific opportunities for this development, so that you could work. Um, at the development where you live, they're also gonna be providing uh, OSHA training and other things, um, to make sure that people are prepared. So it's in addition to um, the services that Reis offers.
Okay, but the thing is, is that we are not, we have, we are not being afforded that opportunity to purchase or even go. And, and I understand that you're saying that that wasn't given to you by HUD, right? But HPD said it's possible.
Right, so HPD's program, HPD's program, I, I, I worked at HPD before coming to NYCHA, and the TILT program is a program that. Um, uh, allowed HPD, the city, to take over properties that were abandoned by their land, by their owners. Um, and has worked to, so this is private housing, this is not public housing, these are privately owned buildings. Um, that HPD has taken over as stewards or guardians, and they work with the residents um, to convert those developments into cooperative buildings. Uh, so the rules are very different when you're talking about housing in the private market compared to public housing. We're highly regulated by HUD, um, and this is a public good, right? Public housing is for um, posterity for the residents of New York City to benefit from. Um, it's not something that, you know, I think HUD is interested in us taking and giving to a very specific um, group to benefit from. They want to allow for other people to benefit from this.
So the thing is that, the thing is that, we're not just, because once you go through HPD, it doesn't just become private, it's, it's still public. So the thing is, is with, um, with you, you go into CNC management, that's a, that's a private program. Okay, you are all, you guys are getting all the funding that you guys work in conjunction with through HUD. To get the funding, so you guys can um, to manage the property. Whereas, we, why isn't, why isn't that opportunity offered to us once again? Because through HPD, HPD offered the program to where we able to manage the, um, get the same funding that you guys get. So we're able to deal with the same issues, we're able to clean the stairwell, we're able to fix the locks on the doors, we, and it's not privatizing it. This, the, um, um, you have Espinard over there, Espinard is not privatized, what it is, is this uh, program through HPD. Okay, and, and, and people could come in the same way they come in through um, NYCHA.
Right, I just want to clarify.
That if we're not given the opportunity, and I want to know why we aren't given that opportunity. Okay, and, and, and I, I feel that it's just taken away from us, and I feel it's, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if it's because of who we are. Okay, and where the, where the property is, because you're snatching up everything, when you snatch this up. We all live on a certain income, when we go for jobs because of who we are, we're not offered the top pay. We're offered the medium, medium, or, medium or, or lower part of the pay. But now, when you're coming to, coming in, and you want us to go over to Section Eight, and you want us to, you want us, you want to take over with CNC management. Now, we are, we, we can't pay the rent that you, you're asking for, so that's why you have Section Eight. Covering the other portion of the rent, the other seventy percent of the rent. Okay, and we're, and, and if we lose the Section Eight, then we're gonna be um, supposed to pay for the entire one hundred percent of the rent.
And so I, Ms. Johnson, I just want to step in for a second, because um, I just want to respond to a few things that you've said, and then I want to allow for us to. Take some other questions from people on the line, I just want to clarify, um, nobody is buying this development, and this is absolutely not privatization. As I said.
But then they gave, they given you, they given CNC management, okay? The, they given them the oppo, they given them the opportunity to manage it. And, and you, right, so they, why can't they give the same opportunity to the residents?
Yeah, so that, that is not, that is not how the program is set up. I mean, I know that there is a lot of interest across the city in thinking about um, ways to in, include residents in the ownership and oversight. Of uh, these developments as they go through this process, and that, that is something that uh, we're interested in looking into, but that is not. Something that exists right now, or, or for Harlem River. Um, we are bringing in.
Table, how is, how can we bring that to the table?
I, I, I can't answer that question right now, you know, this is the, the way that um, we have conceived of the program. And, and CNC and the others on the line are coming in to assist us in doing our job better, right? So NYCHA is continuing to own the property, it is gonna be a public resource, um, this is gonna remain a NYCHA resident. Um, they're helping us take better care of our properties, um, take care of you and make all the upgrades that are needed. Um, and, and that's how the program works.
So if I do not want to sign the new, I have signed, I signed a lease. Or when I moved in here, like I said, nineteen ninety-one, and I've been signing for, ever since then. And I do not want to sign a lease under CNC management, I do not want to have anything to do with the Section Eight. I want to continue working, um, dealing with NYCHA, period, so.
So you will continue, you will continue dealing with NYCHA, you know, uh, the, NYCHA is gonna be responsible fully for certifying your income. We're gonna be the ones setting your rent, uh, and we're the ones that are gonna be teneting any vacant apartments. So we're still here in an oversight role, we're monitoring everything that happens at your development. Um, it's our partners who are gonna be taking care of the, um, the property, responding to repair requests. Um, doing cleaning and maintenance, um, but again, you are gonna continue to remain a NYCHA resident, and we are going to fully oversee. Um, your income certification and your rent. Um, there is no opportunity for your rent to increase above thirty percent of your adjusted gross household income, that is a HUD requirement, and it is also in your lease. So it's really important, again, that you sign the lease, um, and I just want to take a moment, we're gonna go on to take the next question, but. Everybody must sign, everybody must sign their lease, and there's no reason that you shouldn't want to sign your lease and take advantage of the program. Um, like I said, project-based Section Eight provides all the same benefits that you have as a, as a public.
But I don't feel that this is taking, I don't feel that we are taking advantage of any program. I feel that if we're not even given, if our questions of our concerns and um, things like that is, we cannot oversight, or we cannot see the oversight of ourselves. We have to come to you, I feel that those things are just taken away from us, and then you guys come in, step in and say, oh, we can do the oversight. We don't need you to do the oversight, because they have the ninety-nine, because they have this contract. To where they are not able to repair the mold and things like that, so they give the contract up to you, because they, they messing up downtown, they should also give another option. And I feel it's right, that we aren't given that other option.
Ms. Johnson, this is Sam, I'm actually, we're, we're over time here, so what I would ask you to do is to reach out directly to NYCHA. To continue this conversation with them, if you'd like. Um, we definitely wanted to give space for, for residents to have conversations with NYCHA here, and have their questions answered and, and, and feel heard. Um, but for continued questions about this, we really would like you to reach out to NYCHA, um, as we are over time on this particular call. Um, we will have additional town hall meetings, including one next month, um, we have not published the date for that town hall meeting yet. Uh, but again, we will, uh, in the next few weeks, you will get a notice, um, as well as the printed town hall slides. So with that, I'd like to um, kick it over to Donald Modus, um, to, um, to take us out. Uh, Donald, uh, do you want to give a, give us a little sign-off, if you don't mind?
Yes, thank you, Sam, um. Good evening, everybody. On behalf of um, Harlem River, I want to thank everybody for um, coming on, I want to say. Um, you know, these town halls are important to us, and it, and it, um. To have the tenant engagement and for the tenants to understand how important this project is to us, to us. I want to, um, just say, the, the development team, Settlement Housing, West Harlem Group Assistance, the Contractors LMN. CNC as the managers, nobody is a um, sum law, that is misinformation. We stand one hundred percent committed and dedicated to seeing this project from beginning to end. There's been a few obstacles, but we've heard from HUD tonight that we're gonna um, have a closing some. Part early twenty twenty-two, hopefully in February, and, and get this project started the right way. The, the, um. A lot of important questions about the, um, um, model apartments and the, and the HQS and the Section Eight. I think the tenants had great questions, and they're real knowledgeable tenants. And we want to show you one hundred percent transparency, and that's why we're doing these town halls and getting the information to you. You don't have to wait for the town hall to get your information, you can contact us at info@harlemriver.org. And you can get your eh, eh, um, questions and, and whatever. Um, things you want answered, we can do that for you right away, and not answer it through a town hall. I want to quickly address. The conversation with Ms. Johnson just now, and there, there are a lot of HPD, um. Co-ops that's going through, actually, West Harlem Group Assistance is attached to a couple, and we have about, about a hundred and twenty coming out in the next. Few years, so you can contact our office, and there's other providers in Harlem that's doing affordable homeownership. But this is not an affordable homeownership, um, 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 program. So on behalf of Harlem River, I just want to say thank you, and have a blessed and a, um, happy holidays, and be safe, thank you.
Thank you, Donald, thank you, everyone, uh, have a great holiday, be well.
Thanks, Donald.